All right, I think with that, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. All Planning Board members are appearing remotely. The meeting is being recorded. And if anything goes haywire over here and we can't get to any item on the agenda, we will move that administratively to our next meeting on March 2nd. Before we get to our public hearing, we have one A and R on the agenda for 99 Holyoke Street. Is there anyone here to present on that?
Emily Holmberg, surveyor for Lisa Yamakowski.
Hi Emily, how you doing?
Doing okay.
This looks pretty straightforward, but can you give us a quick rundown on what's going on here?
Yeah, basically, um, right now, there's three different deeds, but two parcels on the assessors map. She's combining the two that have frontage on Holyoke Street. And then conveying the back part to the abutting East Hampton Housing Authority. So the front lot will have forty-four thousand seven hundred eighty square feet. And one hundred and eighty-nine feet of frontage. And then Lot Two, the rear lot, thirty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty, is going to be, like I say, conveyed to East Hampton Housing Authority.
Okay, and so my understanding, just to clarify for everyone else, is because what's marked as Lot Two on the plan is designated as not a separate building lot, and that is to be conveyed to the East Hampton House Authority, that we don't have the same issue with frontage? Because it is basically, it's not buildable and it's sort of conditioned on the transfer to the East Hampton Housing Authority. Does that sound right, Emily?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from Planning Board members?
I have one. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I don't actually have that on my agenda.
There were two agendas that came out today.
The second one, okay.
The later one actually didn't have it for some reason, the way I got them, but the first one did.
Okay, that's the problem. I'm looking at the later ones. And so I'm wondering if you could just put, if there's someone here that can share that map, so we can share it with the public, so they know what we're talking about.
Curtis, do you have access to that?
Yep, I'm gonna pull that up. Just give me one second. Unless, unless Emily, you have it already up.
Uh, yeah, I think I do.
All right, you are now co-host. Now you're co-host. Go ahead and screen share as you desire.
Let's see, uh, there it is. So we've got...
I regret to inform you, we don't see it yet.
You don't see it yet?
No.
Okay, let me see, go back to share content. Okay, let me see if I... Files. I've got it up on my screen.
I'm working on getting it up on mine as well.
Yeah, Emily, I can't see what you're sharing. And every time you try to, I lose your video of YouTube.
Probably turning off the camera.
Ah, sorry about that.
Nope, no problem. Um, this is twenty, uh, ninety-nine Holyoke, yeah?
Correct.
Great, okay.
Yes.
Okay. There we go. Can everyone see my screen?
There it is, yeah.
Okay. So James, you were asking a question.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate it. I'm wondering, you spoke to the lots and how they're being sort of transferred here. Now that we can see it visually, I'm wondering if we can just do a quick recap. Are you willing, Emily?
Sure. So, um, Lot One is the, is combining two lots on the current assessors maps, or a portion of one and another one. The front part of, um, let's see, I think that's sixty-three, I think, is the... And so that's gonna have one hundred and eighty-nine feet of frontage, the house lot will, with forty-four thousand seven hundred eighty square feet. And as you see, actually, they've got, she's got it in three separate deeds. And then we're just coming across on the back line and cutting off the back part of thirty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty designated as Lot Two on this. And that's going to be conveyed to the housing authority, which has the abutting apartments, or the budding townhouses.
Thank you, I appreciate it. That's all I needed. I have no issues with this, Mr. Chair.
Emily, is the plan then for the housing authority to come back and get a subsequent A and R to merge those two lots? I'm just curious what...
Um, I don't think they, they need a different A and R to merge the two lots.
It'll just be merged by common ownership at that point?
Yeah, right.
Okay. Okay, any other Planning Board members with questions or comments?
No.
Any members of the public with any comments or questions? You can raise your Zoom hand or turn on your camera and raise your, raise your actual hand. I believe star nine is raising your hand, or star six to unmute. I'm seeing nothing here.
On that subject, I muted someone calling from a number that ends in two-nine-nine, just because there was getting to be a lot of auto reverb. Either hit star six to raise your hand, or star nine to unmute yourself if you have any comment on this particular application. No worries.
Thank you, Curtis.
I just didn't...
Very helpful.
Be concerned.
Chris, would you be willing to make the endorsement? I can't find it on the agenda, so.
Yep, I'm moved to endorse the A and R for ninety-nine Holyoke Street. Map one fifty-seven, parcel sixty-three and sixty-four.
Second.
All right, motion to endorse the A and R. James?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Austin?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I am an I. Emily, do you have all the plans at your office? Is that...
I do, yes.
All right, maybe you and I can find a time in the next couple of days when I can swing by and sign everything again.
Sounds good.
All right, I'll, I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Have a good night.
You too.
All right, now we have this awkward moment where we're still a little early for our public hearing. I don't know what we want to do, City Councilors. Talk amongst yourselves? Salem, you seem to have left Yosemite and you're now in your library?
I, I have returned to the library. It's time to be a studious.
Quite a collection.
The adventure is over.
Do you want to adjourn for five minutes, Chair? I mean, I guess, I guess we can, uh, we can all mute and turn our videos off if we want.
Some water.
Yeah, why, why don't we, we'll, we'll be back here at six fifteen. I mean, nobody go too far.
I'll put a little note up that we're waiting to start a public hearing in two minutes.
That's great, thank you, Jeff.
Are we going by six thirteen is the time?
Um, Verizon tells me it's six eleven. It could slow my life, so.
I agree, six eleven.
All right, thank you.
Is it fun time?
It is. All right, so with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing with the City Council Ordinance Subcommittee to amend the zoning ordinance such that new construction or expansion project buildings over ten thousand square feet or multi-unit housing over ten units include solar power and fifty percent or more of usable roof space or its equivalent. You guys need to open your meeting, or are you all set?
I think we should probably open, so I'd entertain a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion to open the public, joint public hearing with the Planning Board?
Second.
Okay, we've motioned a second. Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
And I vote I as well, so we're open.
All right, so you guys crafted this bylaw. You want to explain to us what's, what's going on?
Yeah, I can, I can start and then I'll, I'll turn it over to Owen and he can finish up. It's, it's a relatively simple proposal, really. You know, for any new construction that's over ten thousand square feet that can support solar, fifty percent of the roof space would be required to have solar or be offset with a ground mount installation. And it also would be applicable to multifamily dwellings over ten units. And so there, there is a threshold, it's, the threshold is ten thousand square foot, square foot building or, or ten residential units would trigger the threshold. And it also applies to covered parking spaces as well. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Counselor Zaret.
Thank you, Chairman Derby. I think, I think this was summarized pretty well. You know, as, as we all know, East Hampton as a city is constantly moving forward with the interest of entertaining green initiatives and sustainability. You may or may not know, because it, I don't think the Planning Board was involved, but we recently opted in to allow, to accept MGL, the MGL PACE initiative, which allows property assisted clean energy financing for industrial and commercial buildings. And one of my interests particularly, and I know Counselor Derby has been finding ways to make the city more sustainable and incorporate sustainable energy initiatives into our ordinance. And so I, I can't really say that either of us did a ton of work in the sense that Watertown, Mass is already incorporated essentially this same language into their ordinance. And there's similar language elsewhere in the country. Denver has a green initiative that is actually a lot more stringent than this. But I, I felt that we've been talking a lot recently, and certainly in, in the more recent years about ways to make ourselves more amenable to solar, and I thought this was a good first step, especially with what I perceive is a wave of, of new construction and commercial industrial construction, as well as multi-units coming into the city. And, uh, the, I don't think we had, the Chair can correct me, we didn't really have any major criticisms of this in, in our committee, and we voted three-zero to endorse it and send it along to you all for your consideration.
And was the Planning Department involved in this process, or did you guys do this just on your committee?
This was just in our committee.
Okay. All right, I guess we can open this up to questions from Planning Board members first, questions or comments? James?
I think actually Chris might have had his hand up a second first. I'm not quite sure. Are you good? All right. So I'd just like to start off by showing absolute support to Counselors Derby and Counselors Zaret. This is a really important kind of project that makes a big difference in a community. I love that you took the time to put this forward. I think it's really progressive and forward thinking, and I'm definitely going to be someone that's looking to find a way to implement this. I did think that we got some comments from a gentleman, East Hampton resident, I think he's also an engineer over on Holyoke, that I found really apropos. They really kind of got into my head about the kinds of things that I was thinking about. And there's a couple of other things that I was thinking about, so I feel like this brings us really close. I think you've done a great job, and Waterville, you know, did a great job. But I, there's a couple of things that I want to touch on. You know, I just want to kind of open, however, with, I'm going to be someone that's looking to find a way to support this, because this is just good for our city, so. I'll get into the nitty gritty later, Justin.
Great, Chris?
Yeah, I just have two questions. Sorry, I just have two questions. The containing ten or more residential units. So does that, so say for example, we just had a project that we approved that had seventeen units, but it was in like nine buildings, so they were, you know, duplexes. And so there was, you know, they're not, it's not like a ten or more residential, like a building with ten or more residences in it, with a big roof area, but it's also not totally ten buildings. Is, how does, how does that fall? Is it just twelve individual residences, so that if, because there was seventeen, that that would work, that would qualify? Just trying to figure out how we're going to, how we're going to, I guess, enforce this when we're doing our reviews.
I think that's a great question, and I think that that's something that, you know, since we don't deal with the permitting of, of structures in East Hampton, that's, we just, that's not something we thought about when we were creating this, so I, I think that's a good point to bring up as we go forward. Is that something that we think would trigger the requirement? It, it seems like if it's all one developer doing that, that it probably would, or it probably should. So I, I think that's a really good point to bring up.
Maybe, just to provide a little clarification, maybe it's ten individual residences, regardless if they're attached or detached or something to that effect, so that we know that little clarification. And then the, the second question is, does this, this only would pertain to projects coming before us from now on? So we wouldn't go back and do that for the, I, I understand for the residential development I mentioned, but say for example, something like the mill, the mill complex, will they be coming before us as they, as they permit new structures, or is that totally done? Like, for example, when now that three mill is, is done, when they come back with five or seven or ten, whatever that numbers are, is that, do they come back to us? Or is that all totally approved as a project at this point?
I think the project is approved. It doesn't mean they wouldn't come back for something else, but I think we approved that phased project.
Okay.
And I do know, I do know for those projects, whether this would apply to them or not, I know that when we pass the PACE resolution, they, they are planning on putting solar on, on their buildings.
I don't know if it's one of them, yeah. Right. I don't either. And there's, there has been, yeah, a couple of changes on some of their rooftop proposals, so they might decide to put solar up, more solar than they originally planned.
Owen, did you have a?
Yeah, I guess it would just be procedural. I guess the question with, with, with that project would be if there's, if there's a future need for any form of site plan approval, if that's, if, if when you said you've approved it, you approved all the sites in total, or you've just had primary, preliminary approval, so I guess that would be my question. But, but I, I would echo what Counselor Derby said, is that that was one of the interested parties who was enthusiastic about us accepting PACE, and so whether they're required, they're really required to abide by this if it's passed or, or not, I think they are considering sustainable energy initiatives in, in that development.
They are, yep. Yep, I agree.
Uh, yeah, Harry?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, but how much would that add to the cost of building something like that? Would it be, you know, even Steven, or how would that work? What's an added cost for to build something like that with solar or without solar?
Solar is so cheap now to install on buildings. I mean, the solar panels have, costs have come down way, way down. So it's probably might be a, it would be a larger increased capital cost at the beginning of the construction, but they'll make that up in energy offsets.
Yeah, isn't there some kind of thing in the state where you, you put solar up, they give you a kind of rebate or something?
Residential, uh...
I, I think, I think Tom might be able to shed some light on this.
I'll, I'm not sure I can, but I was just gonna say, does the PACE ordinance that we passed, would a, would new construction be allowed to take advantage of that, Counselors Zaret?
You know, it's funny you should ask that, and I, I anticipated, I was thinking the same thing this weekend, and I wanted to put a call into mass development and just didn't have the opportunity to. I don't know, but I think so. I think, I'd have to look at the way it works, but I do believe it works for new construction.
Because if it does, or sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, if it does, then, then the cost of development, you know, for the developer could be essentially zero, because they, they could finance it through a betterment assessment that gets attached to the property. So even if the developer is just building the property and immediately handing it off to somebody else, you know, that, they could, like, that betterment assessment could fund that solar development over some time through our PACE ordinance, which currently exists. But again, I'm, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure that that program applies to new construction. I suspect it does, but I've, I'm not sure.
And I think in addition to that, we would have, the developer would have access to state and federal incentives in addition.
James, and then Owen?
Uh, okay, so I've just completed a solar installation, but I think that there's, I'm not sure that the residential rules apply to business applications here. And I can just say, and I don't mind sharing, I put up forty-five panels, which is a pretty big, you know, it's a, it's, it's a big installation for the max wattage that you can have, which I think is ten K. And that cost about forty K, and you get about a quarter of it in incentives. It's twenty-six percent. It was supposed to go down to twenty-two percent this year, but it got extended twenty-six again this year, and twenty-six again next year in terms of your, I think it's the federal tax credit that you get back for doing this. So there are some really strong incentives on the residential side, which I think might apply for the ten unit thing that we're talking about, but I'm not sure that it applies to anything else. And I have to corroborate kind of the feeling that, that Harry's putting out. This was one of the big concerns that struck me right off, is this is a really important thing, but we don't want to do things that make it impossible for developers to develop effectively in our community. So, you know, cost is really essential, and there's a lot of things we've done in the past that kind of raised flags for me, like decommissioning costs. You know, I think things like that, that I, that I think might needs a little bit of discussion here. One of them that I found interesting is in the process of putting in my solar in my home, you know, those who are familiar with this know that there's this stage at the end of the process where the electric company has to sort of approve you, and they can choose not to. And one of the criteria that they had for approval, according to the gentleman that set me up at Northeast Solar, was a sixty percent shading minimum. Now, this ordinance has some interesting numbers. It uses the number fifty a lot, fifty percent coverage, fifty percent daylight operation. And I, I know it comes from Waterville, but I wasn't sure, I actually tried to go to their site to see, like, if I could find the, the discussions about putting this together and how much research went into that number, fifty percent. Because it might be that the, the electric company is not going to turn you on unless you've got sixty of sunlight, you know, and anything less than that isn't going to get it on. And I would hate for us to put an ordinance in for someone who happens to have fifty-two percent shade in a system that can never be turned on. So that's just a concern that I want to throw out there.
Owen, did you have something?
I mean, the only thing I'll just comment on, and not to belittle the concern, but I think that a lot of these sustainable initiatives and building codes, they, they, you know, historically, they can add cost, and when you start to talk about edging towards things like net zero and, you know, sustainable energy requirements, that may just be part of, of the, the municipal terrain, so to speak. But I, I also think that, I'm hoping that we might be able to get an answer during this meeting about PACE and whether it applies to new construction, but I think that, you know, regarding, in, in terms of the, the overall cost of solar for a project, I don't think it's, it is huge. It is getting more expensive, less, less expensive, sorry. And the long-term payoff, as, as Mr. Cockshaw had mentioned, you know, there, you, you do definitely get return for your investment. So that's all I would say.
Austin?
Yeah, replying to Owen and other questions about PACE, it looks as though it's for capital improvements, so. Existing. I could be wrong.
Yeah, to me, the thing, just going with what James had said, you know, it's always interesting doing zoning, right? Because we're in the middle of trying, I think, citywide to encourage more housing development and housing units. And I would just want to make sure that this doesn't act as an impediment. Usually when we do this sort of thing, there's like an incentive to do it, as opposed to sort of a bar on development, so maybe you make the permitting process easier, maybe you let them have less parking or whatever, but there's still a way to opt out and still build the housing units. And this doesn't look like that has that in there unless it's sort of like basically impossible. I'm wondering if you guys gave any thought to that, sort of a way to entice people to do it without forcing them? Okay, any other comments or questions from Planning Board members or department? Curtis, do you have a hand up?
Yeah, I wanted to confirm one thing. Chris, Chris Cockshaw asked whether it would have been applicable hypothetically to the Loudville development in hindsight, and based, acknowledging that it's now a passed approval. It would, it would have been, the draft ordinance to my eye would require consideration under the City Council ordinance as they applied for and received special permit approval under section eight point three for multifamily dwellings.
Okay, so that's considered...
Well, one of the other wrinkles, though, Curtis, is I, I don't see reference to special permit in here. It looks like it's just site plan approval. I'm not sure if that's intentional or not, but it didn't jump out to me when I read through it. I'm not sure why we would draw that distinction, but maybe that's something that Watertown did for some reason. Jeff, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I had a couple. I mean, I know, I, I think there's a couple of technical things that I want to just broach, and then maybe we can talk through them, or hear from the public too, but you know, you know, I think fitting the concept into...
But you know, you know, I think fitting the concept into our zoning just might take a little bit more time. Um I would really urge that we do not finish this deliberation tonight. Because I think um clarifying, you know, whether this is a requirement versus an incentive, like whether pace whether pace is eligible for new construction is really important. Um some of the terminology, you know, I think if you take another town's kind of definitions and zoning and put it in ours, it it just doesn't always merge properly. So I did do a red line version. I'll spare everyone right now of of putting it on my screen. But you know, we have to do some alignment of definitions um at a minimum. I think, you know, I think I just want to say a couple of quick things is that we do have an energy committee in in town who who does um work on energy related things. And it could be good to preview this with them before there is an action. Um depending on which step you talk to them about, whether it's this at whether it's this joint hearing. But if they have information that might be useful, it could be a good opportunity for them to contribute to the conversation. You know, I did, we got a note this afternoon that this was based on Watertown. So I found a half an hour and started doing some digging. So I just I do want to say that they've had a very long process to get to their ordinance. And so, you know, there's other, so a couple of other discussions we should probably have. Um the the one is just this threshold, you know, ten thousand square feet of commercial and ten units, whether that you know, that's that's kind of a, those are, I don't know, I don't know where that falls in our development spectrum of of types of projects. Like, I don't know if that's too big, you know, or too little to start this. We're in a delicate kind of place with our with our economy. And we we do have, you know, hints of things to come in in a positive way. But you know, the size and scale, you know, we might not be hitting the size and scale of projects in Watertown. So this might, this might hurt a couple of smaller projects. It and I guess the idea is like maybe we make it for make it for bigger projects who are developers who might be more equipped. You know, I I think anything that adds to a cost or a process um is really important that we understand kind of a little bit about that. Then the last thing I'll I'll stop in a minute is just and you know, it's it's things that I'm not that aware of. But there's the the approval from the utilities is an important factor. Um so just going into the opt out idea, like right now, if you do an assessment and and it doesn't pan out, then you can then you're exempt. But you know, if if an applicant came to the planning board with a significant financial hardship or presented as to why it would be economically unfeasible to do it, you know, whether we build in a couple more opportunities to opt out. We just won't want to hurt a project that can't can't do this. So I I just feel there's a couple of things to iron out. I didn't see this until, you know, I didn't really put this into like our zoning ordinance and run run it through until today. So that might be an exercise that we have to do and and make sure that the planning board understands how they would administer it and things that they would look for.
Yeah, Owen.
I think those are all excellent points. Um I I have kind of been in really informal discussions with some members of the Energy Advisory Committee. Um and he as things, just the way things happen sometimes, I didn't have a chance to get this over to them. And so I I would agree with the planner that before we make any final decisions, some input there would be helpful. Um and um I I did my best job from the city council eye to try to um make sure some of this aligned with our language. But I we definitely need the planner eye to make sure that our language lines up. Um and I do agree too that maybe consideration for uh square footage and and units that apply to to our city or part would be, I assume that would be part of the discussion. Um and what was the other thing I wanted to say? Oh, what I think Denver, one of Denver's models was um you could provide proof of um of in in lieu of so placing solar, a solar array on a development, you could provide proof of some renew other renewed shared renewable energy source, like you've opted into a hundred percent solar. So something like that is something to talk about as well, um instead of a full opt out. Uh I I do agree overall, we don't want to create financial hardship, but we also want to set some degree of of guidelines to so that there is an opt out, but but not set it up so everyone can just can just opt out.
And I think I I think that that, you know, Jeff, your comments are appreciated. Uh I don't think that we're necessarily looking to to push this through or make it go faster than it needs to go. Um you know, I I have a I have a friend who I asked to attend this meeting, he couldn't tonight. He's a he's a commercial solar expert. Um so uh and he's worked for multiple commercial solar installs, including the one that Oliver Street. Um but you know, and I so I think that that's a perspective that we need to make sure that we include in this fold. Um and and looking at the lens of the the um the power company as well. Uh but you know, I I think that it's always it's always better to incentivize something than to to, you know, be punitive. I I and I and I I think that it would be great for us to find a creative way to do that, that doesn't make it so easy to opt out, that people just won't do it. Um because there is going to be an additional cost. I mean, there's that's it's just part of the way it is now. Um but it's, I think, you know, as a municipality, I think it's the benefit is going to play out in the long run. You know, much more uh much more potently than the the cost. So you know, and that's why we want to do this, but appreciate your comments for sure.
Yeah, I when I saw it, I immediately was thinking of how we handle affordable housing where there's significant incentives for people, right? And so it's not so much that they can opt out just because they don't want to. Oftentimes they opt in even when they don't want to, because it gets them more units, fewer parking, whatever the benefits are. There's a lot of sort of corners we let people cut if they're willing to add affordable units. And I think we could do something really similar to that in this context, that would be the same thing where people would be, even the people that aren't clamoring for solar would say, boy, if we put panels on fifty percent of our roofs, we can do A, B, and C. So that might be a way to get them on board. James?
Took the words out of my mouth and maybe not just forty B, but forty R two and smart growth. Because I remember we put together some criteria there because we're struggling to find incentives and we made a little list. And this seems like it can really blend well with that and I I really like that. Um so I think there's a lot of possibilities here. I was wondering too if maybe you wanted to read in record the um the letter uh that we received about this.
I was hoping he was going to be here to speak, so I didn't have to read the whole thing. Let's let's see if he if he appears, um because it is a lengthy email with a lot of good points, I think. Um but maybe after we open it for a public comment on this, more comments or questions from planning board or city councillors? Okay, so uh members of the public, if you have any comments or questions on this proposed bylaw. Again, you can raise your physical hand if you're on camera or your Zoom hand or uh what star star nine is on a cell phone, star six to unmute. Um anybody with any, I got Rochelle Prunty. Welcome.
Thank you. Um uh so I'm with I'm the general manager for River Valley Co-op. And um uh so I've I've had some experience with solar in the last couple of years on the planning and I just I thought it might be helpful just to share a little bit about the the kinds of obstacles and barriers that we came across. Uh so uh just for background, we've got a um um almost a megawatt system. It's nine hundred and sixty three and a half kilowatts between uh solar canopy going over the parking area and panels on the on the roof. And um uh you know, our goal was to get to to net zero, basically to offset all of the electrical use that we projected for a year with uh uh solar energy generated on the site. So um it was a it was a big goal and I didn't know if we could hit it, but we we have managed to to pull it together. But just some of the things that are out of people's that that may be really challenging, just the the upfront feasibility study and engineering costs for our project were about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars before we even knew anything about feasibility. Um so that's a at risk investment that that we had to make not knowing what the what the outcome would be. And that started a couple of years before um we actually got the the uh uh site plan and the the permit together. Our our total project cost was over three million dollars. And uh and it could have been worse. The interconnection agreement, I mean, there's really some issues with the utility um where the uh we we bought the property at on uh January thirtieth of twenty twenty and um applied for the the interconnection agreement the first week in February and we started construction in February. And we were ready to put in the peers for the solar panels um in July. But we didn't get our interconnection agreement until August. And from all accounts, that was like the fastest interconnection agreement like that people have seen for something like this. It can take a year and a half to get one. As it was, we started construction and invested in infrastructure before we got um were able to get the financing. Uh we got the financing in uh January of twenty twenty one and put in the peers uh of construction in August of twenty twenty. So not everybody's able to jump steps on financing and everything before you even know if it's if things are feasible. And I just um I think that the solar is great. I don't know what we can do about the utilities where the whoever's putting in the solar is bearing the cost of any upgrades required for the grid. And sometimes that can be a million dollar extra fee with your interconnection agreement. It can be five hundred thousand, it can be twenty thousand, it can be two hundred thousand. You just don't know. And that could stop feasibility after you've already gone down the road a ways. So I don't want to, you know, I think this is, I think this is great. I just um uh wouldn't want to see us get into a situation where the infrastructure for solar, to make solar work with the utilities in Western Massachusetts is holding up development in East Hampton. So I think that's that's really what I wanted to say. I'm I'm totally for solar. And I think it's a, I think it's a good thing to do and I think it's a heavy lift.
Thanks, Rochelle. That that's a really valuable perspective to hear, especially because I know that was that was actually a key goal of your project. It's not like something you were, your arms were twisted or you were doing it for money. It was sort of part of the focus anyway. So um that sounds like it can be pretty frustrating.
Question.
Yeah, Austin.
Or Rochelle, um was the interconnection agreement uh completely necessary for what you were trying to do? Could there have been an a alternative that hadn't required an interconnection agreement? Or was that completely necessary for the for the scale of of your solar?
Oh, could we have taken it all behind the meter?
Yeah, if if it had been significantly smaller.
Uh you know, I don't know the technical answer, but I the um the rooftop system goes behind the meter and we have an inner and that's a smaller system than the the canopy. Um and that also has an inner, so we have two interconnection agreements, one for each, one for each system. So I don't really know the answer though.
Jim?
Austin, you may have had more. I I just wanted to add to that, that the um the off-grid battery options, they're a lot more expense. The batteries don't last that long. They have big, you know, they're like ten grand a piece and you need banks of them for project years. I can't even imagine. You know, so you know, I I'm not sure off the grid would even be feasible for the kinds of projects that we're that we're talking about. It's a great idea, though.
But James, your point about your own rooftop system, um you know, I mean, I've heard stories of even commercial uh solar fields where they get them completely done and then they're still at the mercy of the utilities for when they turn them on. And there's no real, there's no stick that those private companies can use to force them to turn it on. So it would be pretty tragic if we even figure out the tax and the incentive situation and say, okay, like you might have to front your money here, but within three years, we think you'll get your investment back. But there's no way for us to actually force them to the utilities to play ball and you might be putting people in a real disadvantage. I think we got to dig into that a little more. Uh Owen?
One thing I'd be curious about, thank you Rochelle, because I kind of looked at your businesses as a model for uh opportunities for other businesses to do something similar and thank you for all you're doing. You know, one thing we have in town is the school project. And I don't know if that is substantially different because it's a MSBA funded project and it's a school. But it it could be useful and I just left a note for myself, you know, process for the school. They have, I I want to say like a hundred thirty panels on the new school. And I'd be curious to know how their move, how that the processes it how the process has been and will be uh with that project.
Yeah, that's a good question, Owen. And I know that they have, they put them in when they built the high school too. So there may be some some completed project information on that one that would be helpful too. To the extent solar in Massachusetts is anything like what it was even that short time ago when the high school was built, but it might be enlightening. Um other comments or questions from the public? I don't see anything. So uh yeah, Austin?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that there's a MMA dot org article that I can share with Curtis that describes the Watertown ordinance and it says that it does not apply to duplexes in Watertown. And the exceptions for buildings, there are exceptions for buildings that cannot take advantage of solar due to the structure or location uh or location. So that was two questions that came up earlier in the evening.
Right.
Send that to Curtis.
That makes good sense to me. I think also what what Planner Jeff Bag was saying earlier also kind of rings true, which is that like that I I'm not opining as to how it would work in Watertown. The way it would appear to work from our definition of multifamily dwellings is one way. And it it I I think that we would want to tinker with the language to make sure the outcome is for us as it would be for Watertown.
Uh Jeff?
Yeah, I agree with the idea of just tinkering with it a little bit to make sure, I mean, I think like we we have the big mill revitalization project, which is kind of one set of projects we have, but if you look at the other mills, we'll we would be, you know, looking at renovations. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of empty spaces still in those mills. So we'd want to be clear on like whether they added twelve units into one of the renovated mill buildings, whether that's whether that's a trigger, because I mean, they might have load bearing issues and there might be. So I did look a little bit as quickly as I could kind of today, once I knew where this kind of was derived from. And you know, there's something about um this this proposed ordinance that includes a solar assessment. And so, you know, that's where you would have some kind of the the applicant would have some kind of consultant to do this kind of baseline assessment. And it sounded like that's how Watertown started it, is that they had this in their ordinance to require the assessments. And then this is the next level to that, which is, okay, you you brought us an assessment. So they bring they bring the assessments to the planning board and I would imagine that some projects incorporated and some said they couldn't. And this was kind of the next step to that, which is you do the assessment and then if it says you can, then you shall. Um so there's just a lot of just thinking it through in terms of our process that we would want to do. One, I I had a question about the flip side way to approach this. And I just wanted to find out if it's worth incorporating into this discussion or at least vetting a little bit in terms of our permit requirements. So we when when River Valley Co-op came in, um they were getting a site site plan, a special permit for the grocery store use. And then we, the best fit we could do was added another special permit for the solar. And even in just doing that, we realized that our solar bylaws outdated as it is. It's from two thousand nine and then a lot of things changed in, say, twenty And then a lot of things changed in, say, 2013, 2014 with the SMART programs. So the idea of a car, the carport, you know, the camp, the parking lot canopy is there was not, it was not a perfect fit. We had to make it really work. And so my long-winded way is to ask, you know, like something like carport solar or rooftop solar, you know, the other approach that I would need to do some research. The other approach I know other municipalities have done is to define carport and rooftop in their zoning ordinance and then make that approved by right or site plan approval and take it out of the special permit process. So that's the other, the flip side of this is to instead of, you know, we can explore the requiring it because I think that's the understanding I have from city councilors that that's kind of the emphasis that you are bringing to this is to to make sure that it's part of it. But the alternative is to make the permitting path much easier if they do want to incorporate it. And so that would, it kind of flips the script a little bit where you'd be telling an applicant, this is guaranteed at the permitting level. If you want to go down the road and do all these feasibility and investments. Whereas I think the way Rochelle described it is that there's that upfront point of risk for a developer to have to even come up with that assessment. So understanding a little bit more about how this would work, you know, I'd be willing to draft kind of a version A, which is this, the first version that we have in front of us, which is kind of requiring it and make sure we understand how that would work. But then also this version B, which is to to incentivize it through the zoning. So I just wanted to air that out a little bit and see what any reactions were.
Tom?
I have a couple thoughts here. So the first thing is, I absolutely think that we should do anything, like if it turns out that we have city requirements that are making it harder to do solar, then we absolutely should address that. And I would argue that we should probably address that before requiring anybody to do solar, because it seems sort of silly if you're like, okay, you have to do solar. All right, I'm going to go do solar. Who do I need to go through? Well, us. You need to ask us to do the thing that we're making you do is sort of like not necessarily the sort of thing you want to hear from your government. So I get that. The one thing I do just sort of want to say, though, is with something like solar, I, you know, a few of the members of the planning board had suggested the idea that we treat this sort of like affordable housing where, hey, if you do this, we'll, you know, give you some, you know, some, some, some benefits, we'll cut you some slack on some of our permitting or some of our requirements. I think that the one big difference between them is that when when you're doing an affordable unit, you're basically by definition getting less money for that unit than you could. Like you're foregoing some significant opportunity cost to do this. I'm putting solar on my roof this year, and I expect that over the course of the time that I'm doing that, that I will save a significant amount of money by doing so. So I think it's different. And frankly, I think if there's a requirement in your zoning, in our zoning, that you're willing to relax for somebody because they do something that is, yes, environmentally friendly, but also ultimately profitable. I think you might want to wonder whether we should have that requirement for any project at all. If it's something that is that we're willing to cut somebody a break on for doing something that will, in the long run, make them money, like, is that even a good thing to have? So that's just something that I kind of want to just throw out there. I certainly think that, you know, that whatever final version this takes needs to incorporate the fact that for some projects, this probably just isn't going to work because of sun or because of the load bearing situation of the ceiling or whatever. But I, I really do think that, well, yeah, that's all of my thoughts. I'm sorry if that was a little disorganized.
James, one sec. I think one thing, Tom, those are all real good points. And it is always interesting when we decide, and it's not us, but when our zoning decides that there are certain requirements that apply to every project unless you do this. And then all of a sudden, we don't care so much about parking or whatever the issue is. And sometimes I think those things are in there just so you can take them away to encourage someone to do something else. But I think that, you know, when you sit in on these hearings for these projects, even these bigger ones, the margins for these proponents are really small. And I think that forcing someone to come up with cash upfront as opposed to gradually over the next five to 10 years. I think that's a valid consideration. And I'm less, I don't want to say I'm less concerned, but I'm more concerned about doing that in housing situations where I think we are short of housing. And I think we've identified that as a priority. And so to me, anything we do that sort of inhibits that is really hard if there isn't some sort of opt-out or something that they're giving instead, that that makes me nervous just because I think that we might have some real unintended consequences, especially where some of the solar seems like it's out of our hands and out of the applicant's hands. And it's dependent on either the state or the utilities. So that that part to me would really, that gives me pause just of the housing specifically. I frankly, when I first got this from the city clerk, I was hoping we were going to revamp the whole solar bylaw because the whole solar bylaw needs to be started from scratch. But I guess that's another project for another day. But one thing at a time. James?
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that. Jesse, to what you said, Tom, I love the way you're thinking about this. And we're sort of looking at the moral concept behind solar. For me, that's that's kind of exciting. I am hoping and believing that I'm going to save money from the solar I got. But I also believe strongly that I'm doing a public good, that there's a public good component to that solar, that by having solar, I'm doing something for our planet and for our community. And I think that, and I think you know this, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but I think that is why for me, you know, the potential personal profit isn't as big an issue as the as the gain for our community and whole at large. I'm hoping personally that maybe we can come to a point where we get kind of a mix here. I do think that we need to incentivize this. And look, as you said, at anything we may have that may be getting in the way of putting solar. But I think the way you headed with this initially is is a really good idea for it to have some teeth. Personally, I agree with what you said, Jesse, about maybe taking out the 10 homes or changing that so that it's not a requirement for them and had more heavily incentivized for for the 10 units. And then for the business side of it, I still think it needs a little bit of tweaking, maybe increase the scale a little bit so that it's really going to be projects that we know are already well-funded. You know, these are projects that are going to have the money to do something like this. And the thing about it is, you know, whether it is for the home or it's for a business, they're going to use that as a marketing advantage for the sales of that property or whatever they're going to do with that property if they're, you know, putting it out to tenants or to, well, tenants. Because those tenants are going to pay less on electricity. So there is like another tangible advantage that they get from having these in place. So again, love the way you're thinking about it. I'm hoping that we can come to some sort of mix on this. And I think it's going to take a lot of meetings and a lot of discussions.
Owen?
Yeah, so I mean, I agree with with everything that's been said here. I think there's a lot of good input. I think, you know, measures like this, I think it's important to find a way to, I think, as you've all said, and maybe I'm reinforcing some of this, to find compromises, but it's important in terms of, you know, to some degree, on the grassroots level, us being blades of grass in our city and working up, when you look nationally in terms of measures to reduce carbon emissions, that you have to have, there's some of this has to be required. If there's opt-outs because of affordability and you're talking about trying to encourage more affordable units and you want to have some sort of exclusion or or opt-outs for for developments like that, I think that's reasonable. But measures like this, if you, if there's, to use, I think James used the word teeth. I mean, we need to find ways that it, that large developers can't just say, oops, I can't do this. And I'm not going to include, I'm not going to include sustainable energy in my building. You know, that's, that's how these things just never happen. But I also agree that I guess I wasn't aware, and clearly I didn't do enough homework, that some of our solar, our solar zoning ordinance needs updating. And I wonder if we need to bring that into this whole discussion before we can, we need to catch up with that in order to meet this where it is, to move everything forward. So I'm wondering if looking that over and submitting that, that that has to happen first.
What do you think, Jeff?
I mean, I do think it's outside, not to cut you off, Jeff. I think it's outside the scope of the notice we have now, but it doesn't mean you guys couldn't come back with that proposal because I think, and you know, PVPC just spent, I think, the last year with East Hampton's involvement, sort of coming up with best practices and draft bylaw language that I think could be really, really helpful. Because I think we've had a ton of those come before us. And there's been a lot of times where we're looking at the language and saying, this doesn't really apply to what we're doing here. And, you know, we can't really go outside the bounds of the bylaws. And I think that would be helpful. Sorry, Jeff, to cut you off, though.
No, it's, it's really just a process question. I don't, I don't know the answer if it, if we would withdraw this one and wait and pull, like, create another one to catch up to this. I don't know how it would work, but you know, it's, there could be some merit in it. I don't want to say definitively that this couldn't move forward. Because it sounds like that's a desire. But there are, you know, the other thing that has come up a couple of times is right now, our zoning is, in some ways, our zoning favors, you know, large solar developments that are in fields or forests. And and that was one of the big fixes that we, that that PVPC document helps us with the new SMART program is that basically the people in the state kind of said, oops, after the first couple of years of SMART was out, they, they, we all saw that the the incentives were not structured properly, that developers could still, you know, take a reduction, a green field reduction and still net a huge profit. And that's why we had all, like, we had a couple, but some communities got hammered so bad with solar in fields or forests. And so that would be the, the, there's a couple other little things that we would add, but that would be one of the big things we would do is try to look at flipping some of those permitting requirements to make it easier for people to do this, the parking lots and the roofs and make sure it's super clear that that's like the goal. And make it a little bit harder, to be perfectly honest, make it a little bit harder to develop some kind of green site for it. So I don't know, I would have to think about process a little bit to understand what we would do.
So just really briefly, and then Owen, I'll go to you. Thanks for that, Jeff. I mean, I think there is a path process-wise that we could potentially take, which is to keep this, continue this hearing and congruently work, you know, bring forward the the former solar ordinance. You know, I mean, when I, when we first worked on that in 2009, you know, we, our eyes were focused towards Oliver Street, and we were thinking about big landfill and and things have changed. And so, you know, I feel, and especially as we look at, you know, how how communities got really hammered in their, in their fields and forests for solar, like we, we should protect East Hampton from that in the future, I think. And look at, you know, prioritizing structures that have already been built and parking lots to be solarized. And so I'm happy to, to, you know, start that process and 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 then we can kind of run those two things congruently and complimentary, I think, that could, it would be, you know, we could do these things together. So I know Owen, you wanted to say something.
I was basically going to say what you just said, Mr. Chairman, is that it seems that from some, some very well-informed knowledge here from the both the planner and the planning board, that that might be the most prudent way to do it. And we can continue to work on this language. And I can't speak too much to what we would do with the other language yet because it's not been submitted. But I I think if we want to do this right, that would be the way to do it. We keep it our agenda. We set a long-term goal for this. And, you know, if if it so pleases someone to put forward amendments for our current solar ordinance, bring that to ordinance, discuss that. And I think that would, I think, you know, the best thing about this is it's clearly identified this need, if anything. And so I think that what you're suggesting, that's what I was going to suggest too, is that it sounds like that's what has to, what the right way to do it.
And folks, correct me if I'm wrong on process, but I think the only timeline we had was to have this hearing. Right now that we're in this process, we can continue it sort of indefinitely if we need to. Okay. So I mean, I think that makes sense. Jeff, does that make sense procedurally from the planning department's perspective? I don't want to let this all die. That's the only problem is like, there's always an incentive to sort of, we'll continue it and we'll work on it. But like, solar is a huge project. So like, we got to be able to like actually spend time on it. And when I say we, I mostly mean you and Curtis because you have the planning expertise. So I want to make sure that all works on your end too.
Well, I think it does. I mean, I think knowing that, especially the members of the ordinance committee who who started this, I mean, especially if you're comfortable hold, like, holding it for, I mean, you could still work on the language, as you said, but holding it back a little bit to let another set of amendments catch up, I think that would be highly desirable. I think it'll help paint a clearer picture of the overall goals of what we would want to do. And to be honest, I just, you know, just, it's just, you know, struggling to figure out where like my person, like my time and attention would go. This, this has, this has certainly nudged this to the things that I would work on, and I appreciate that. I'm just thinking about the other amendments and the, like, our section seven, whatever it is, 7.3. The, to to create a working draft, to kind of do the red line changes of the things that I've observed since I've been here, is not, it's not overly complicated, but to get the language situated, to bring it to council, and then it would bring us, you know, so we have a couple more like policy discussions, but we would need that language to happen first. So so I don't think we're talking like a really long time, maybe, you know, a month to to come up with the next version of the red line of the whole ordinance and then fit this in and then re-bring it, you know, together as a package. I'll just put in one quick plug, just so we all know it's coming. It's like with the, the two things, with the, with the green field developments, you know, one of the other things that really became abundantly clear after having dealt with a few of them is they have no regard to where they are in it, what what's around them. And so we saw a couple of projects that got plopped down right in between two existing, you know, protected parcels. And and it had trail systems and they were just, you know, we had no opportunity, we had no real opportunity to have a solar developer look at that and acknowledge that there, if there was a trail running through your project, you know, it would connect, like that kind of connectivity. That would be the other thing that I think, in addition to what we already talked about, is we could add that component to make sure that if we do get a a new site developed, we could do a better job of having them look around and make sure that we're not cutting off, you know, a future trail connection or something like that. So I'm on board with with working, you know, to create the draft and then sending it back into the process if that's agreeable to everyone else.
I think that makes a lot of sense. And I guess the advantage to the solar is it's one of the few that's a little more standalone than some of the other sections of our bylaw. So I think we, it probably doesn't cause that ripple effect that we're always afraid of where you change one thing and then it means change the next thing and the next thing. James?
Yeah, like where we're going with this. I just wanted to add, in the beginning of the conversation, I noted that I had some more of the nitty-gritty things that I want to talk about for this at some point. It looks like this might be held or might, we might continue the discussion. So I'm not sure tonight's the specific night. I'll just toss a couple out to kind of give a sense of what I'm talking about, things like drainage and two minutes surface and open space. I think some of the stuff that was mentioned in the letter, those are big issues for me to make sure that we're considering those. And I think we need to adjust the language. You know, obviously, we're talking about a lot of adjustments in this language, but just make sure that we mention those things and create criteria for them. I don't want to get into the weeds on these, but I just want to mention that those things are there that we'll need talking about in the future.
Owen?
Yeah, and I think, without getting into that letter too much, I mean, I don't, but, and I see Rochelle has her hand up, so I apologize if I jumped in front. But I just want to say, first of all, thank you because I'm really excited that we're actually take, continuing with this process. And I think the the concept here is good. But I also think that some of the concerns, and I'll have to look more deeply into it, some of the concerns in that letter are probably covered in, in, potentially in CMR in terms of how solar has to operate. So sometimes a lot of the state language spells it all out without having to include all of the specifics on the local ordinance level. I might be wrong. And Jeff could probably speak to that more than I can, but I just, I'll have to look into that more deeply. But also, Jeff, thank you very much because I think this is going to be really exciting.
Rochelle?
Thank you. Well, I really appreciate just being a part of this discussion. And mostly, I just wanted to offer, if I can be a a resource, and give you a little more information about what we're working on and sort of the issues that have come up. What we did, didn't, in the end, was more costly than what we had expected going in, and we just stuck with it. And we just stuck with it to get it done. So I, I, um, there's real challenges with trying to own a system yourself instead of having a big company do it. And I, I'd like to see something about um, working to make solar locally owned as much as possible and not just have it be the, you know, the wealthiest of the wealthy and the big companies and the big corporations that, that own it. And I don't know what, if you can affect that through zoning and, and uh, these kind of ordinances. But I'd be, I'd welcome more conversation. Let me just say that. And you know how to reach me. So, thank you.
Thanks so much, Rochelle. It really is a great perspective of somebody who's actually gone through this in the last year. And frankly, also just appreciate the fact that you um, stuck with the project. Because I, I think the solar part of that is a really cool part of it. And a- as many people have said tonight, like we all benefit from more solar. So, you know, especially when it's in a parking lot and on a roof, that's great. So thank you. Chris?
Happy for the opportunity.
Sure.
The, the letter that you're talking about from, from someone that had the discussion points, I don't know if I have access to that. Was that, was that an email that went around with a link to that? Just letter?
Yeah, it was, it was attached to Jeff's email that was the last one before this meeting, I think. Yeah, is it on our, on the website, Jeff?
The letter did not, the letter is not on the website at the moment.
Okay, maybe since we have time now before the next one, you could post that there. Um, and we can use that as a way to get it out to people because it, it does have a lot of good points. I think as, as Owen said, I'm not sure what's behind all of them, but they're all good questions that we probably need to figure out where the answer is.
Yeah, I'd like to see that letter.
But it's, it's pretty dense and technical too. So if, if I can avoid a public reading of that.
Sorry, Jeff.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Um, any other comments or questions from planning board, city council, public, planning department?
No, just thinking about the process. So, you know, um, we, you posted a legal advertisement for this one. So I think Jesse, as you said, we've met the statutory requirement to start this hearing. When I said it would take, you know, like a month to get the language going, that's just to buy myself some time. Because there's, there's other things, obviously there's always other things. But then within the, within a month, if the language gets submitted to council, it gets sent to ordinance. And then, you know, and then we would set a second, we'd have to set a second public hearing for the other amendment and that would catch it up. So um, not to scare people, but if we looked two months out from now, you know, that, in theory, that should be enough time to catch up the two public hearings. So in like April, it, in theory, we should be able to convene again as this joint body and then be considering both. And, and maybe what we would do is just merge them together somehow, um, like re-advertise them so that they're both together as one. And maybe that would be one way to do it.
Well, we could like continue this, we could continue this like to the April twentieth date? Or do you think we want to do a non-meeting night for us, Jeff, and just have a separate working session for both groups?
I think given the other things that could be coming in the spring, I, I think having a non, I mean, I hate to ask the plane board to meet again because you guys meet all the time, but that would be the best case, I think, to have it on a, another night. Or just stick with the April twentieth and we'll work around it. That might be the easiest because everyone.
Monday, the nineteenth?
We could do Monday or we could do like the week before, like the thirteenth and not have back-to-back meetings. I'll defer the planning board or the ordinance for how they want to handle those things.
During April break, I'm not going to be available. So that's one thing to consider.
Let's stick with the twentieth. That, that's a normal playing board meeting night. So that would be nor, like a little more normalized, I think.
Is that, is that April vacation though Salem? Do you have the dates? I can't tell if it's that week of the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I can't remember. As I look at my calendar, I feel like it would be the week of the twelfth, as I look at my calendar, but I'd need to confirm that.
We, maybe we could tentatively set it for the twentieth, which would be the week after maybe. And if it comes up that the, the, the ordinance subcommittee can't make it, we can then push it forward in another one of our meetings that comes before then, Jesse?
Yeah.
Saucing it out there.
I'm try, I'm trying to find on the website when the school vacation is right now, but that's not jumping out at me either. So, yeah, I suppose we can, we can set a date and then move it if we need to. I mean, I guess the only way to move it at that point is to actually open the meeting and move it, I think, but.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
Owen?
It looks like it might be the week of the twentieth. I'm just not, granted, I'm looking at Worcester Public Schools. I just quickly typed that in, but I think it's the same.
I just found it. So I can tell you. It is the week of.
It's the April nineteenth week, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, nineteenth is Patriots Day. So I think that's. What did you say, James?
The thirteenth, the week before.
That's fine for me.
I think we should try it. I think we should continue this one to the, the, um, sorry, what did you say, the thirteenth? And then we'll try to line up the other one and meet the thirteenth, the target.
Okay.
Does that work for ordinance? You guys have any conflicts for the thirteenth?
The only thing I'll say, just out of um, deference uh, to our Muslim community is that I'm seeing on my calendar that that's the beginning of Ramadan. But if that's not an issue for anybody, then that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I, I, I made, I announced that.
Thank you.
And we, six fifteen as always?
Yeah, that's fine.
Six fifteen, is it a special meeting?
Well, actually, yeah, if it's just that meeting, we can start at six. That works for everyone.
Also, we just want to start the meeting at six fifteen. I'm okay with that too.
Yeah, either way. So we need to narrow it down though for my motion. Do you prefer, uh, Council Derby, do, do you prefer six fifteen to six o'clock?
No, six is fine.
Six o'clock, okay. A motion to continue the public hearing discussion regarding the amendment to our solar ordinance in East Hampton to April thirteenth at six o'clock.
Seconded.
All right, to continue to April thirteenth at six. Harry?
Hi.
James?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
Okay, and I, can I get a similar motion from ordinance?
Who moved?
Second.
Okay, uh, Tom Peak?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
And I vote yes too. We are continued.
Great. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
And Rochelle, thanks again.
Yeah.
They didn't put everyone.
Thank you for working on this. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
Fair.
Um, okay, and uh, so I guess we're done with that. Before we adjourn though, I did, I haven't made this mistake in a long time, but I did not open this up to public speak before we started into our business tonight. So in case there's anyone from the public who has anything to say about any item that was not on the agenda, uh, you can raise your virtual zoom hand or turn on your camera and show your hand or star nine on your cell phone or star six to unmute and just address. Anybody for public speak? All right. I don't see anybody. Curtis, do you see anyone on your list?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Uh, with that, then I guess um, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Done moved?
Seconded.
All right, to adjourn, Harry?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Austin?
All right.
Chris?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
Good to see you all.
Yep, we'll see you tomorrow at six fifteen. City Council?
Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn? Okay.
Seconded.
All right, uh, Tom Peak?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
And I vote yes too. See you guys. Thanks so much.
All right, see you guys tomorrow night. Thanks a lot.
Bye.